Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and get started. Some folks coming in a little bit later, obviously, to pick up at that point in time. My name is Tom Broderick, I'm the Mayor of Anderson. I would like to welcome all of you here this evening that's come to take part in this public meeting, to be able to gather some information about the project that we're going to talk about a little bit tonight. The reason that we're having this meeting is because we want to make sure that any of you who live in the area that may be affected by this project one way or the other have complete information in advance about what this project is about, why we're doing it, how we're going to do it, when it's going to start, when it's going to end, and how it might have some effect on your lives. I can assure you that the folks that are involved, and you're going to meet many of them this evening, and they're going to speak to you, and I'm going to introduce them here in a few moments, but you can rest assured that all these folks have put in a considerable amount of time with you in their minds. The whole idea of this is to be able to do this project in such a way that it has as little interruption or adverse effect in any way on your lives while the project's going on, and at the same time provide, in the end, a sound upgrade or infrastructure that's desperately in need repaired. So, what we're going to do, we're going to ask that as the program progresses, that those of you who may have questions, and I assume that some of you will, that you hold those questions, and we want to make sure that we answer each and every question that any of you may have this evening while you're here. And if you do have a question when we're done, we would ask if you step up, simply because we are recording this for Anderson Television, we're going to record your questions and answers, that way it can replay on our television station locally, and maybe those who didn't get a chance to come tonight will be able to hear a little bit about what's going on here. The project, which of course is called the Green Branch Sewer Rehabilitation Project, is named, of course, after the sewer system that's out in the area that's affected. That sewer that's put in there now that we utilize is many, many years old, and some of the folks that are here are going to talk about that, we're talking about a 100-year structure that was done really well back in the day, but that's been a long time ago. And because of a lot of factors, obviously its use, and the fact that, you know, the shifting of land and so forth, it's just really been hard to maintain over the years, it's become costly, and it's not become as effective as it was intended for, especially with the amount of use that we have today. The sewer line that you're going to hear about is very large, it's sort of like the main artery, if you will, that where all the sewage finally kind of gets to as it gets kicked on out to the water pollution control area. And the folks will talk about this in detail again, you're talking about a system that has like a 96-inch at the max size, which is much greater than a lot of the areas, and so it's something that just desperately needs to be repaired. The cost of this is being paid for, we have what we call a long-term control plan, we were, many, many years ago, we were in a situation where we agreed with the government, the federal government, to have a control plan that we would upgrade our infrastructure with regards to our sewers, and this is part of that project, and this is about a $4.33, $4.4 million project, it's being paid for through funds that have been raised through bonding and through rates, and of course, when you pay rates, you pay it for one reason, and that is you want to be able to get the service that you're paying for. And so, this was anticipated, and so these rates were collected in order that we could pay for these infrastructures and improvements. It's went on for a number of years, it needs to be repaired, and so again, we're taking steps to do that. The folks that are going to be here this evening, I'm going to introduce them, they're here either stand up or hold your hand up, and they'll of course introduce themselves when they do any presentations, in order that you'll know who these individuals are. The first person I'd like to acknowledge and introduce is David Ices. David is the Chairman of the Board of Works, David's in the far back right now, he'll be up here in a little bit. The Board of Works in our city government is the entity that basically oversees and takes care of all of our infrastructure in terms of utilities. There's three members on the board, David again is the Chairman, we also have Jack Hesling, who's here, is an individual like yourself, who's going to watch this presentation. We also have Nora Manor, Nora's up here now. Nora is our Superintendent of our wastewater treatment facility, she's extremely knowledgeable, she's done this for a number of years, and she will be able to tell you everything you ever want to know about super treatment, and then something. But Nora's very good at what she does, like I said, and she'll be very informative. We also have Mike Spires, and Mike is back here. Mike, the gentleman you probably met when you came in, giving away these cards, if you didn't get one, make sure you get one before you leave, because I don't want you to think that if you have questions later, you can't get those answered. Those cards have a number on it, you can call, and we'll answer your questions at a later date if you think of something that you didn't think of this evening. Mike is our City Engineer, he has a great deal of experience, he's involved in all of our projects, we involve some degree of engineering in regards to our wastewater. Also here is Samantha Pankel, and Samantha is over here. Samantha is our Public Information Officer and Media Affairs individual, who basically makes sure that we get out public information in different matters, including such as this, and she helps set all this up this evening. Thank you Samantha. We also have, then we have some folks from some companies here that are involved in the actual project itself. We have Institute Forum, Technology USA, with these folks, we have Dwayne Ginterski, Project Manager, there we go. Also, we have Kerry Lane, who's the Operations Manager, Kerry down here, and we have Brandon, I'm sorry, and we have Brandon Steining, Field Engineer. We also have United Consulting, consulting firm that's involved in this, Bill Hall, who's the Engineer and Vice President. We have Kerry Cunningham, Project Manager, also an engineer. And, I think that's it, right? The person I'm going to introduce next is the Vice President that's involved in this project, it's Keith Bryant, and Keith, you are, there's Keith here. So what we're going to do, we have a PowerPoint presentation, and again, they will go through all the details of this project. Again, keep in mind that everything we're trying to do is to make our community a better place to live, and we're sorry that it's going to interrupt any of your lives in any way, but we will do everything we can to minimize that and get this project done as quickly as we can. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor Broderick, I appreciate it. Again, my name's Keith Bryant, I'm with United Consulting, we're lucky enough to work with the city on this project as the design engineers. And as you can see here, we're looking at the project containing approximately, I want to backtrack just a second, something else you might want to keep a lookout, we've introduced some companies, but we're also looking at the Institute Forum as a few sub consultants involved, contractors in this project. So I just want to make everybody familiar, if you see these logos out on trucks, one being Range for Rent, one being CSC, and one being Thinamun, they're also involved in the project, so they're there for a legitimate reason, and they're helping get the project done, so. In just a brief summary of the project, we're looking at 84- to 96-inch brick interceptor sewers, so very large sewers. We're looking at going from, on Locust Street, from about 13th Street, northward to 9th Street, and then we turn west to go to Arrow. So it's about 3,500 feet of pipe that we're looking at rehabilitating, and the project's required, as the Mayor mentioned by the city, is a long-term control plan. Just moving forward here to give you a graphic, and just an idea of the size of this, you can see a guy walking in here, we're looking at a sewer about this big. The interior of our sewer, we've got some other slides here, photos to give you a concept. This might be what our sewer looks like kind of when we're done, very smooth, very good, very structurally sound. Unfortunately, you'll see here in a minute, that's not what we have at the moment, and there, that's why we're doing this project, so. We've got some maps here, just to give you a general idea, we're looking at this area of the city. This road right here is a state highway, 32 or 14th Street, and then this is Nickel Avenue, and again, our project is kind of up in this area, again bounded by Locust and 9th Street, and Arrow, kind of along that L shape there. And zooming in on that, you can kind of see more specific of where we're at, again, this is 13th Street, and we are rehabilitating the existing sewer all the way from south of 13th Street, north along Locust to 9th Street, and then west over to Arrow Street. So that's where the existing sewer is now, and that's where we'll be working to rehabilitate that sewer. We're also involved in the alley between 9th and 10th Street, and we'll talk about that, but we'll have bypass pumping force mates set up along this alley, because, and IT will go in more detail on this, but to do this project, we have to get the flow out of the sewer and bypass it around our work area to get this done and do it right, so. Just a little brief history, the city has looked at these projects, and looked at this project at least, and studied different options, at least since 2011, there's recorded reports and studies, a number of evaluations through the year 2016. And again, what they were looking to do, this is a very big project, it's very expensive, and they wanted to make sure that they not only, you know, spent the city's money in the best manner, but also got the best bang for their buck, had the least disturbance to the residents, and again, had something that's going to last for a long time as well, because sometimes cheaper's not always the best. We want it to last for a good long time, we're spending kind of funds on it. So, one of the options looked at, because you can always replace these sewers, well, when you're talking about an 84- or 96-inch sewer, that's a huge cost, most estimates were two to three times what our rehabilitation cost would be to replace this. So you're looking at quite a bit more burden for the repairs that we want to minimize. You're looking at a lot more disturbance, takes a lot longer time, because if you picture this, you're excavating that entire sewer, and that sewer, along that path we're looking at is 10 to 20 foot deep. So you're tearing out the whole road to do this, obviously, that takes a lot more time, a lot more disturbance to the residents, a lot more costly. You also get into whether there's action at the right away, because again, we either have to bypass pump it, or we have to keep that existing sewer intact while we're serving people, because we can't shut everybody's sewers down either, we have to keep everybody in sewer service during this project. So that, because of all those reasons, that kind of fell to the wayside pretty quickly. Rehabilitation, there's several methods out there, have been done for more than 50 years now, and we're looking at a design life of at least 50 years based upon history. And again, there's a number of methods to do this, and we again looked at several rehab options, we even bid different options on this project that we were comfortable with. But in the end, we believe we've got the best system, might not necessarily achieve us again, but it's the best system that's going to give us the longest longevity, and it's got a history of lasting for quite a long time. And IT will talk about how the installations they've done here, give a little bit of history on that, so. Again, the sewer rehab, for all those reasons, turned, in this type of process, turned out to be the best for this project. The Mayor touched on the project purpose, again, it's part of the long-term control plan, so it's mandated by state and federal governments, the city has no choice, but while you're doing it, you try to do the best you can do, you have to do it whether you want to or not, so let's get the most benefits out of it, at the least cost for the residents, and do the best we can with it. One other benefit, although that's not the main driver, is we reduce flow to the treatment plant, and what that means basically, especially during wet weather, because we're taking out a lot of the infiltration out of this system, and that translates to dollars as well, because every gallon of fluid that comes into that wastewater plant, whether it contains wastewater or sewage, or whether it's clear water, we have to treat, we can't separate it, requires power, requires chemicals, requires all the treatment process, so we save some money there too, as an added benefit. And one of the other big items is structural stability. The Mayor mentioned the sewer's been in the ground for probably 100 years. If we wait until that sewer collapses, just because it's so old, it's a huge cost to replace it at that point in time, it's much cheaper to avoid this emergency work and do it as a planned construction than it is to wait that period. The other downside to wait until it collapses is you have a lot more disturbance to the property owners. So you're, at that point, you're rushing in there, you're closing down streets, and there's no planning involved, and you're spending a lot more money to do it, so. Again, it's required, but we're going to, the city is doing the best they can with it, going to do the best for the citizens to do it. Couple photographs to give you some idea, we're looking at, this is more what we're looking at on the inside of this sewer, I don't know how well you can see it from out there, but this is a brick sewer, there were quite the artists back in the day to build sewers out of brick, and having lasted 100 years. So this is all mortared together, just like your brick you would see on your house, and you can see this clear water running out of there. When the groundwater gets high, you can see infiltration, that just means we have cracks in those mortar joints, and then those bricks, and there's a lot of clear water coming in. And the downside of that, in addition to having to treat that water, is that the longer over the years that goes through there, it's kind of like Niagara Falls, water will cut to that mortar, eventually making this conduit structurally unsound. And the drawback to that, of course, is what you saw on the downstream side of the system, which happened at Locust and then MLK Boulevard, once that collapses, you lose the street. Again, then you're back to emergency repairs, and for all the detriments we talked earlier. In addition to that, there's quite a safety issue, I mean, this probably won't happen when nobody's around, and you know, when traffic's not around, and when you won't have a problem, so you know, the timing of this could create quite a safety hazard as well, so. And so I think that sums up what I wanted to talk about, and I was going to turn it over to Ken Quillen with IT, and he's going to go through some more slides, and then, again, as the Mayor mentioned, when we get to the end, we'll open up for questions, and see if you guys have anything we can answer.
You know, before we get started, I'd like to thank the Mayor, you know, the city, United Consulting, and the residents of Anderson, to give us the opportunity to come here tonight, and basically tell you a little bit about us, you know, a little bit about what we do, and what, you know, the project entails. I will tell you that, I will tell you that we've been in business since 1971, we're the innovator of the product, we're, our company is as old as the product that we're going to be using is. Between 1971 and now, we've perfected our product tremendously. You know, we are the largest CIPP company, but the one thing that, to show you how well we've, our products gotten, and how well we've kind of perfected the process, is we've installed over 30,000 miles of CIPP. You've got to put that in perspective, we're mining, on average, about 120,000 feet in North America every week, which is, which is a lot of pipe, if you think about it. You know, what exactly is cure-in-place pipe? You know, cure-in-place pipe is, we have the ability to come in with a pliable liner, install it inside an existing sewer pipeline, without having to excavate the whole line, cure it in place, using a method of, with a boiler or with steam. And then, when we're completely done, that pipe is as strong, if not stronger, than what the hosepipe was originally. The one benefit it also gives you is it's seamless. You know, CIPP's also known as, it's a trenchless technology, and if you, like it was said before, there's a number of different types of technologies that are out there, the CIPP product has been the most used, and is the most common in most of the rehabilitation You know, why do we need to repair the sewers? If you take a look at some of the pictures that we have here, with the sinkholes, you know, what happens with the sewers as they're in place, and these right here, I believe, are 100 years old, when they're in place, if their pipe has been put together, joints separate, water starts infiltrating in, you start losing some of the soil and surrounding bedding that goes around the pipe itself, and the more that that happens, it continues to make the separation of the pipes larger, and what ends up happening is you end up with a large hole that takes a lot of the surface material into it, and creates like a sinkhole, or creates a bad spot in the line. It allows water, other debris to come in, it allows, in some situations, it allows calcium to build up, debris to get caught, and a lot of times, it'll impede the flow. Once we line a pipe, it actually includes, it increases the flow capacity, because it is a seamless pipe, it doesn't have the joints, and it doesn't have the friction that a normal pipeline has, so it increases the flow. It increases the pipe strength, right now, we design our liners to be a 50- to 100-year design life. Our technology is right about 50 years old, so right now, we've got liners in the ground, and we really don't know for sure exactly how long they'll last, we believe it'd be 100-plus years. It also reduces the maintenance, you know, our liner with the smooth surface that it has, it doesn't collect the debris, or allow the debris to get collected, and it keeps the flow going, and all motion debris or solids that's in the line continue to flow. How we doing? So, this project here, we, you know, this is a large enough project that it's actually done in phases. The phase that we're in right now is more of our preparation phase, and if you've been on the job site, or if you've been out in the neighborhood, you might have seen us already. We've already done a couple of sidewalks on the project site, we've done some pipe measuring, we've calculated where our, you know, traffic control, or where some of our issues might be. You know, we basically have tried to get our group of our subcontractors kind of coordinated, so we can actually, they actually know what they need to do, and when they need to do it. Part of that site preparations, again, would be the putting up the traffic devices, and starting on the 12th of June, you're going to start seeing the traffic devices start getting set up, along with some of the bypass. The reason we need to lead the traffic control out there is basically for the most paramount reason, is to keep you and us safe. You know, these sewers are located in the middle of the street, we're going to be working right over the top of these sewers, we do have some sizable pieces of equipment, we have a number of people that's going to be on the job site while we're doing this project. It's to keep you from having to get, or getting inside and getting entangled with some of our equipment, and also, it protects our people from the traffic of the street. Bypass pumping is probably one of the largest parts of our project here, you know, we're doing 84- and 96-inch sewers, just imagine what the sewer capacity of those sewers are, and what we've got to do is actually pick that flow up from one location, and take it to another location to allow us to actually repair the sewer line. It's going to be a sizable amount of equipment, you're going to notice us being there, you're going to see our pipe, but it is something that we have to do in order to get that flow diverted. Cleanouts are going to be installed, and if you don't know what a cleanout is, a cleanout is that, is a, an access that's going to be put between the residents, or your home or structure, to the main line. And the reason why we're installing those cleanouts is so that we don't interrupt your sewer service or your sewer flow during the project. We will be actually pumping out of those cleanouts to make sure that your service goes uninterrupted. Sewer line cleaning, once we get the bypass set up, as you can see with the pictures, it was quite a bit of equipment, sewer, you know, we've got to actually clean the sewer. At this point right here, we actually go in, and if there are some of those joints that are separated to the point to where they're infiltrating a lot of water, a lot of debris, we're going to have to repair those before we can actually put the liner in. At the same time, any calcium, any buildup of debris, any dirt or sediment that might be in the line, we'll actually get that removed and get that trucked out. As you can see, some of the, some of the pipes here, this is what we run into occasionally, what the pipes look like. Set up the preparation for CIPP, we are going to have to excavate a couple of access pits for the bypass, and we are going to have to excavate a couple of manholes in order for us to do the installations. Again, these are 84- and 96-inch lines, most of the manholes out there, I think, are 48-inch or smaller, and we've got to be able to have access down to the pipe to be able to get our product in. As you can see here, some of the modifications, you know, you'll see some equipment on site, some excavating equipment. Once we get those areas excavated, the bypass is up and running, and the pipe has been cleaned, well set up for our installation, and this is kind of a unique installation, it has to do with the size of the pipe. We're doing what we call here, is it's called an over-the-hole installation, and basically what we're doing is we're doing what we normally do in our manufacturing facility, right on site over the top of the manhole. We're going to be basically setting up tents, we'll have some tents set up with some roller beds, we'll have a conveyor apparatus that'll be right over the manhole structure, and you'll see a lot of this equipment going up, right over the top of the sewer. We've used the tents, we're going to be using, we're installing these lines during hot weather, so our tents will be somewhat air-conditioned and contained for wet-out operation. So our over-the-hole equipment again is set up, you'll see a lot of, a lot of equipment, we are going to have to move that equipment, we have three installations, which means we have two setups on this project. The first setup, we'll have one installation, and our second setup will be able to do two of our installations. So we only got to set our equipment up twice. So you may see the equipment in one location, and once we get the liners installed, you'll see us when we have to move it. We'll be working around the clock to get this project finished. Once we start our process, it goes until we're done. Liners that we install are time-sensitive, and you know, once we get them installed, we're going to hook them up to a heat source, which will be a steam boiler or a water boiler, and then we will go around the clock until it's finished. Once installations are complete, we do have some manhole work that we've got to do, we've got to spray, or what we call manhole rehab, it's a spray product that we're putting onto the manholes. As you can see with the picture here, we'll actually have the manholes cleaned, we'll have an individual go down into the manhole and actually spray a rehab material onto the manhole, to basically, just like we did with the pipe, with the cure-in-place, we'll be doing with the manhole structures as well. On the manholes that we've got to excavate, or the areas that we've got to change or run our bypass pipe to, we are, we will restore those areas and bring those back to either the condition they were in or better. As you can see here, we do, we will have some road destruction with the manhole, once we, once we put those back in. Current schedule, like I said, the pre-measurements, the sidewalk, we've already completed, or not completed, but we've already started, we have the public meeting this evening, our traffic control and bypass starts getting set up on the 12th of June, we believe we'll be starting, we'll have it all tore down by the 12th of July. Oh, excuse me, we'll have it installed by 12th of July. The install structures and cleanouts, again, start 12th of June, sewer cleaning, we'll get that started on the 12th of July, once we get the bypass and everything underway, and then we'll start our lining work on the 17th of July. And again, we're going to be working 24 hours a day to try to get this project done as soon as possible. Once we're completed with the installation, we'll actually start removing our equipment, and then we'll restore the site. The complete construction schedule would be from 12th of June to 25th of August, we hope to be complete. You know, our schedule is kind of weather-sensitive, though we have bypass set up, a minor rate event, it's not going to hurt us that bad, but if we get some of these 100-year rains, we're basically probably not going to plan and install until that event's done, just to keep things from getting too far out ahead. You know, we're your guests, we actually are really pleased to be able to come in and actually do this work for you guys. We really look at this project, and we're excited about getting it done, we like these type of projects, this is kind of what Institute Forum's bread and butter really is, is these type of projects. It is a little complicated, it has some difficulty, but that's kind of what we like. Our top priority on this project is to keep everybody safe, that includes the residents, includes our inspectors, and also our workers. You know, we, like I said before, we have a lot of large equipment, you know, the one thing you've got to keep in mind is, you are going to notice us on the job site, this is not something we're going to come in, and you're not going to see us there, you're going to see our equipment, you're going to see our bypass, you're going to see our traffic control, you're going to see our trucks, our people, we're going to do everything we possibly can, you know, not to be a disruption to you at all, but we are going to be there, and you are going to see us. Again, your sewer service will continue throughout the project, that's with the cleanouts, that's the reason why we're putting those in, and we do have onsite project managers and superintendents that'll be there 24 hours a day in case there's a question, in case there's something that comes up. a day in case there's a question, in case there's something that comes up. If you have a certain situation that comes up, you know, it's quicker that we know about it, the quicker we can get it resolved. You know, our goal is to successfully complete the rehabilitation of these large sewer lines in the safest environment in shortest timeframe possible. And that's our mission statement for this project. And again, we're excited about coming in and doing this project for the city of Anderson. We're really looking forward to getting it done, and we believe that you'll be extremely happy with the outcome. You know, the biggest concern that's going to come up is going to be the traffic control. We are going to have to shut some roads down, as you can see. We are going to have to run, again, we're running a bypass pipe from one, from the top of the project to the lower part of the project. We're trying to use the most direct route possible that's not going to have or cause any disruption. However, you are going to see the pipe, and there are some roads that we're going to have to close. And there are some, some traffic control measures that are going to have to be put in place to keep you safe, keep us safe, and also keep the traffic off the project site. This is our traffic control plan, as you can see, there's a lot of signs that tells you that there's a lot of, a lot of traffic control. There's also poster boards on each side too, though I'm trying to see if you want to get a better look. Again, on behalf of Aegion and Incentiform, we're really excited about this project. We thank you for the opportunity. We think it's going to be a great finished product. I think you're going to be very, very happy with it. And again, you're not going to have to worry about it for 50 to 100 years.
My name is Samantha Pankel, and I'm the Public Information Officer for the city of Anderson. We want to make you as aware as possible about what's going on in your community so that you can find alternate routes, and we can make this as seamless as possible. So to do that, we're going to have five outlets. The first is going to be Anderson TV. And if you have cable, you can get that, if you have Comcast and AT&amp;T. On Comcast, it's going to be channel 18. On AT&amp;T, it's going to be channel 99. You also can hear about some traffic updates on the radio. So here we have WHBU, 1240 AM, and 103.7 FM. And you can also find stuff in Herald Bulletin. I will be sending them updates on what you can plan to see on your commutes to work and wherever you're going. Also, we have the city website, and that is www.cityofanderson.com. So when you go to that website, normally there's a spotlight, well, there is always a spotlight section, and there will be a traffic update on that spotlight light option right when you go to the homepage. So it'll be very easy to find and very easy to follow. We'll make it easier for you to see. You can also find us on Facebook, and that's @AndersonIndiana. And then, to make it more convenient for you, if you have a phone, you can call the 24-hour hotline, and it's just a phone number that if you have any questions, you can give that a call, and we will answer 24/7. And we were giving out business cards. There are some out on the back table, and the number is 765-810-8723. And if you call that city phone number, we'll be able to answer your question. There's also a sign-up sheet in the back, and that'll have your, we ask for your email and your phone number. That'll help us get in touch with you for any information that you could want. We will be sending you that personally if you give us that information. There's also business cards, so make sure that you take one of those so that you can have this phone number and other information. I would like to now open this up for questions. If you have any questions, please come up to the microphone, and our panel will get to your question.
Ken Delstee, the Herald Bulletin. On your slides, that Locust Street would be closed except for one-way traffic north to south. Is that correct?
Yes, that one-way traffic will be in the north.
For local access only?
Northbound. But during the beginning of this bypass setup, that will be temporarily closed until they can get the pipe pulled out of the street.
Will Arrow Avenue be closed at any point? Or limited?
It'll be limited. It may be a good idea to take a look at that map right there, that's got all of those in there. We also have other locations that we can provide.
Just one more question. On the bypass, so will that be, you're going to bypass the existing line, will that be chapped into the line at Arrow and then out to the plant, or are you going to truck the waste material away from there? It's going to be connected to the existing pipe to the west of Arrow?
Yeah, it gets picked up on Locust, right just south of 13. It's taken through those pipes to the end of the project below where we're working, downstream, and it's dumped back into the same system.